Get started. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here for a Roseburg City Council Candidates Forum. And welcome to the City Council Candidates. And I am Robyn Wisdom. I am a League member, a League of Women Voters of the Yumcoa Valley. And I'll be your moderator this evening. Can you hear me just fine? Great. The League's mission is to provide unbiased, nonpartisan voting information so that you can make informed choices. Voters' Guides are now in libraries around the county. You'll find some over there on the wall. Please check out our website for more information. That's L W V U V dot org. The forum is being recorded, and it will be posted on our YouTube channel. Please sign up for emails, and you'll be notified when the recording is online. We have a signup sheet over here, near the door, I believe. And a few housekeeping notes. You know where the bathrooms are across the hall. And there's coffee and tea and water available over here. And there's refreshments, so please help yourself at any time. There's information about the League on the tables. And again, please sign up for email alerts. There are seven candidates here, incumbents and challengers of the Roseburg City Council. The only challenger unable to be here is Sam Starnes. Council terms are four years long, beginning January 2025 to December 31, 2028. Now, during the forum, you'll see League members passing out three-by-five cards. Someone wave them around. Yes, Nancy will be passing out three-by-five cards and pens for you to write your questions on. And then she'll, when you raise your hand again, she'll pick them up and deliver them to our screeners, who are right here next to me. They will screen out duplicates and inappropriate questions. And then I will pose them. So also, please put on your question who you want it directed to, because we won't have time to ask each candidate each question. So please direct your questions to a certain candidate. Candidates, you will be allowed one minute to respond to questions. I know that's short, but because we have so many candidates here, and we only have a 90-minute time, we're going to whip right through these. So please watch for the timekeeper when your time is up. Now, here's Alice in the front row. And she's got our, there's the stop sign. You'll look for that. And the 30-second sign, so it'll warn you a little bit, anyway. And that's Alice Lackey is our timekeeper. And thank you, candidates, for being here and engaging with the voters. We'll start the questions. Please hold the mic. I guess you just lean forward to talk into the mic, and so everyone can hear you. So the first question is, we'll begin with Ward One this time around. We're going to switch around. But Mr. Moore, in one minute or less, please tell us where your ward is, the biggest concern your constituents have, and how you know.
So Ward One, I think I heard somebody describe it as northeast, basically northeast. So Diamond Lake, north of Diamond Lake and Boulevard and to...
Can you lean a little closer, maybe?
North of Diamond Lake? Sorry. I'm a little bit of a joker. North of Diamond Lake Boulevard and I would guess east of I-5, I think. Thereabouts, probably not directly. I think that the challenge is, yes, 30 seconds left. You're saving me there. I think that a lot of the challenges, it's varied across the group. I think everything from the rampant drug use and the impacts of that to the homeless situation, to just housing. I think, and it's basically just talking to and hearing from the people in my ward and the community in general.
Thank you. So Katie Williams, would you answer that question?
Ward One?
Yes.
Okay. Where is it?
Yes, where is your ward, the biggest concern of your constituents, and how you know?
Okay, so Ward One, north of Diamond Lake, out Diamond Lake a bit, up Stevens, all the way over to, all the way up to Newton Creek and to the I-5. Biggest concerns, housing, of course, and the unhoused population as well.
Thank you. And now we'll go to Ward Two, Andrea Zalinski.
Hi, everyone. So I represent Ward Two, and Ward Two is the northwest area of Roseburg. So we are like the Hugh Criss area, Werwood. It goes all the way down Garden Valley to Mulholland and all north of, so along I-5 in that area is all of Ward Two. I think the biggest concern, like housing is one of the biggest concerns, I think, all across the city. But also public safety. Our ward is, you know, we had a, we started a Neighborhood Watch group. That's how I got to know a lot of my neighbors, is through Neighborhood Watch, because we had some concerns about public safety in our area. So that was another really big concern of my neighborhood itself. And of course, that need for more housing in the area is a big concern.
All right, thank you. Steve Emerson?
Yeah, so the one thing that I heard the most complaints about was homelessness and vagrancy in the duck pond over by Fred Meyer. I've, I know I've taken my kids a couple times over there. It seems like it kind of fluctuates the amount of, I don't know, should-be criminal acts that are going on in that, in that area. But yeah, I mean, I think the thing I saw the most complaints about is that area. And I've brought my kids over there a couple times, and things have happened where I'm like, my kids can't see that, and just turned around and, you know. Well, I wish that, that area could be a little more family-friendly.
Thank you. And Mr. Tom Miklech?
Yeah, my name is Tom Miklech, and I'm Ward Three Representative, which encompasses the area south of the, South Yumcoa River, all the way to the Oak Street Bridge out towards the Goddak Road. That's mostly it. I think we also encompass parts of Stewart Park. And that's what I also am concerned with mostly, is our clean waterways, clean riverbanks, or homeless people have taken it over. There's garbage and needles all over, and our police department is working overtime trying to rectify the problem, and our City Council is trying to give them the tools to do it. And I give the police department a lot of credit. We need safety in our streets. And we also need to rectify the parking problem downtown. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now Blake Meacham? Would you respond next, please, for Ward Four?
Do you want Blake to go first, or would you like me to go first?
Blake, please.
Oh.
I'm sorry if it's, if we're out of order.
Hello. I'm from Ward Four. And one of the things that seems to be an issue right now is the homelessness and people's feeling of well-being and public safety while also having homeless people in the area. And just to be clear, there, there may not be a direct correlation between increased amounts of homeless individuals in the area and people's safety. But the perspective of people seem to be that the safety of people's well-being is compromised. So personally, I've had experiences in areas of Ward Four that weren't very pleasant with homeless people. But that isn't to say that all homeless people can cause a detriment to our safety. So that's just one of the issues that I see and definitely needs to be addressed.
Thank you. Mr. Meacham? Yes, Zach Weiss, please.
Hello, everybody. Ward Four is pretty much south of Diamond Lake, east of the river, with a little bit of Winchester up into like Gaddis Park area. I think everybody on this table up here has pretty much mentioned the homeless issue and mentioned as well the public safety factor of it. So I don't think that that's necessarily a ward-specific issue. I think it's actually a city-wide issue. So these are things that we all are going to have to work together for. I actually think one of the biggest issues we have going on with downtown area in this ward in particular is the kind of lack of future that we have designed for it. Downtown is one of the oldest historic areas of town, and it's kind of been forgotten about, in my opinion. I think it should be taken charge to be one of the most prioritized parts of town, because it's one of the parts that we can't rebuild. We can't get back the way that it once was without taking what we have and rebuilding it as it is. So if we don't move forward with downtown, we're going to run, we're going to lose it. And that's, that's one of the biggest issues I see, is the economy of downtown losing.
Thank you very much. That was our first question. Now we're going to move on to question number two. We will begin with Ward Two this time. And so Andrea Zalinski, please answer this question. Why are you seeking this position? What experience and skills do you bring to the city and the City Council?
Well, I currently serve, so I was appointed in 2015 and then elected in 2016 and again in 2020. So this is my hometown. This is where I grew up. This is where I raised my son. I've lived in the same neighborhood and house for the past 25 years. I know a lot of my neighbors. I worked for the sheriff's office for 20 years, got to know a lot of community members, served on a lot of commissions and coalitions, really understanding the issues that were impacting our community. And so I feel like I have a good understanding of our community. I think I bring a lot to the table when it comes to the longevity of serving on council, understanding the issues that are facing our community, and, and also taking the accountability for some of the things that we are still falling short on. So I feel like, well, I love this community, and I just want to serve in that capacity.
Thank you. And let's move on to Steve Emerson.
Yeah. In my work with the Roseburg School District, I've realized that we have a lot of kids that are going to have a lot of opportunities that previous generations haven't had. So the partnership with UCC and Roseburg High School, the certifications, the, the training, the, um, the level caliber of worker, if, and there are a lot of kids in Roseburg School District that, you know, that it's not going to be a, you know, go-to-college thing, or they don't even have the opportunity to go to college. But I see the City Council is like the backend. The, the front end's the Roseburg kids right now in the school system and their, their talents and abilities. The backend is having a city that's receptive to bringing robotics companies or, or manufacturing, jobs that are good, high-paying jobs. I'm sorry.
Thank you. And we'll go to Ward Three, Tom Miklech, please.
Would you repeat the question?
Yes. Why are you seeking this position? And what experience and skills do you bring to the city and the council?
Why am I seeking this position? I've been here for, in, in City Council for about a year. And I'm becoming aware of many things that are occurring within our city, and most of them are really good. And what I, the reason why I want to be on the City Council is the privilege of being able to go out and ask questions to all sorts of people and organizations and really get to know what's going on. And I'd like to continue that, and I'd like to keep offering up my suggestions and debates about what's going on. Mostly, I want to see Roseburg grow responsibly. Don't really want to see it turn into a big megalopolis. I want to see it develop in a real good manner.
Thank you. And we'll go on. Let's go to, with Zach, since you're in order there.
Um, I'm not actually from Roseburg. I moved here specifically because I had spent some time here, and I absolutely love this town. I think it has a wonderful amount of potential. And I would like to be a part of helping it get there, to be completely honest. I'm heavily invested in it. I have business. I have property. I have a family that I'm trying to raise. I think that I have all of the things that can bring a view to the City Council for my ward that would help even it out a little bit. There's a lot of stuff that we are not taking advantage of. And there's a lot of things I think we're kind of wasting time and resources on. And I see a lot of that from being intertwined and involved in the community down here. And I just think that I can help guide that a little bit. That's all.
Thank you. And Blake Meacham?
I've, I've lived in Roseburg most of my life. I, I left shortly to get my education so I could start teaching. I work with the public already, and through that, I've learned that one of the biggest things you could do to help somebody is to listen to them. And sometimes providing some sort of relief through words isn't necessarily the answer, the answer to a problem. Sometimes it's just listening to people. And so it's a skill that definitely I picked up through teaching. The other thing is, I just, I love the town. I'd agree with Zach on that one. I care about this town, and it's just something that I want to try to help out with. Thank you.
Thank you. And so now we'll go to Ward One. David Moore, please.
Um, let's see. Why do I want to be on the City Council or here? So I was born and raised here, went to Winchester, went to Jolene, then went to Roseburg High School, born at Douglas Community. So I always joke that I live about a mile and a half or so from where I was born and where I graduated from high school, and then went in the Marine Corps. I've lived in Ward One at my house for over 20 years. And what I would tell you is that as a young kid in junior high and high school, I used to be able to walk all over the place. I can't tell you how many times I'd walk through Gaddis Park area, or I'd walk through Stevens, or, you know, it'd be 2:00 in the morning, walk from downtown to out at the end of Harvard or wherever it was. And you could argue whether that was safe or smart, but nothing ever happened. And I really look at the community now, and I just care about my community, and I want it to have a good future, like what's been said out there. So I really like you, Alice.
And Katie Williams?
So why I want to serve? I love Roseburg. We moved here 10 years ago, and within the first year, we opened our business here, and we've been in business in Roseburg now for nine years. And I want to serve the community that has supported us for this many years. I love, I love Roseburg. It's really easy. It's a very simple answer for me, but I just love it. And I, I want to give back to the community that has supported us. And I, every day, talk to people from all walks of life in our business, and I listen. Because I think listening and being able to work with people is the key.
All right, thank you. And now we'll go on to question number three, and we'll start with Ward Three. So Mr. Tom Miklech? What can the city do better to address the challenges faced by our homeless population?
That's a real hard question to handle for us. It's a complicated situation. And we've got people out there that don't really care. We've got people out there who have fell on hard times. And there's ways of helping them. But I feel that you can't help somebody until they want to help themselves. And our various organizations in town have accomplished that many times over. But there's a group of people there who do not want to fix their situation. They don't help themselves at all, so it's almost impossible to help them. Well, I think the only way we can do it is by establishing regulations and make them accountable for their behavior.
Thank you. So Zach Weiss? Let's see. Let's go to Ward Four. Zach Weiss, please.
Um, I think there is a lot of nuance to that question. It's a hard one to answer within a singular minute. But as there is many different walks of life of everyday people, when it comes to that community, people that are living on the street, I don't think classifying them all as homeless is correct. I think there are a lot of people, like you mentioned, that fell on hard times. There are people that face drug addiction. There are people that face mental health, and a combination of all of those. So the fact that people try to come up with a singular answer to solve that problem, it doesn't really work that way, in my opinion and my experience. I do think it's going to take a lot of resources that are allocated properly. And I think that's one of the biggest things, is our resources we currently have that are pushed out there are not being put to the right people, so that everybody can take what they need to start helping themselves. And then we can start figuring out the answers of what we do for the people that aren't willing to help themselves, or don't want to help themselves, or move on in that way. There is a lot of nuance to that, and it's a hard one to answer as a singular answer.
Blake Meacham, please.
Um, I think one of the most important things with addressing this problem is the, the negative public opinion about homelessness. I've heard lots of nasty things about people that are unfortunately homeless. And the truth is, is that homeless people are like you and I. They're real people, and they have real feelings, and their problems are real, too. And statistically, homeless people and people that aren't homeless share the same sort of problems. Lots of people that are not homeless also struggle with drug addiction. So changing how the community feels about homeless people is, in my opinion, one of the most important steps in helping out at least the problem with homelessness in our community.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to Ward Two, Andrea Zalinski. What can the city do better to address the challenges faced by the homeless population?
There's a lot we can do better, right? This is, like other people have said, is a very hard issue to face. These are humans. These are people who actually live in our community. They're our neighbors. And they, a lot of them have fell on hard times. And so making sure that people have access to the resources that, that they need to get out of homelessness is really important. And that's why we need, as a community as a whole, because city alone cannot solve this problem. It really does take a whole community to come around and help people, navigate them through the system. A lot of people have a hard time just filling out a form, you know? So mentorship, I think, is really important. That's not a city job, but that is definitely, like, we need to be working with our nonprofits, the people who are working with the unhoused, and help them navigate so that they can get to the resources that will help them get out of homelessness. And I think we can do better as a, a community as a whole.
Thank you. And Steve Emerson?
So this is something I learned from the school board. I think we would need to create a committee. And we would need a couple board members on that committee and some people from the real true stakeholders in the community for input. I've heard things all the way from, you know, we need to figure out a plot of land to, you know, move all the individuals to, which, I mean, I think the stakeholders in that situation would, you need to go talk to the people that live around that area and see if that's something that they get on board with. But I mean, I think, I like what Zach said. You know, if you, if you got somebody that's choosing to be homeless, I know in Portland, when I lived up there, it was lifestyle for some people. Then I think it's law enforcement. I'm not sure where else to go with that. But if it's somebody that, you know, I mean, like this, this community experienced the mills closing. And if there's a mass, like closure of a mill or, okay, I have to stop. I would say on that end, treatment and help nonprofit.
All right. Let's go to Katie Williams in Ward One.
Well, I think the first thing that we need to remember is that however they got there, these are people in our community, and they needed to be, they need to be treated humanely and with fairness. Whatever we decide to do is going to have to be a compromise. And I want to make sure that the, that the things we have available, the services that we do have available are being utilized, and find out what the barriers are when they're not being utilized.
All right. And David Moore, please. Yes, it's, what can the city do better to address the challenges faced by our homeless population?
I am going to say that I think what Zach, what Zach called out earlier is something that I've been echoing. And I think that the antecedents or the, what we see with homelessness is not a, homelessness to me is a symptom. It is not the cause. And how they ended up there varies depending on the individual. I think the challenge is, a lot of the application and a lot of the conversations have been around, how do we make them disappear? Or how do we handle them as a bulk, rather than trying to address and identify what, what do they need? Why are they homeless? And then giving them a path to not being homeless. And to what others have said, if somebody doesn't want to take a path towards no longer being homeless, then they're voluntary. And then that has a different type of way that we need to address it. And maybe that is law enforcement or something else. But I think we need to address, whether it's drug addiction, whether it's a job loss or some other thing, unaffordable housing or something like that.
Great. Thank you. I think we'll change and go to two minutes each question, because we're, we're not going through this as fast as I thought, or taking enough time. So we'll give you a little longer for your answers, okay? Next question, starting with Ward Four. What do you see as the city's major needs and goals? Let's start with Blake. Blake Meacham, please.
Um, this opinion is sort of tied to my occupation as a teacher. Before I was a teacher, I substituted in most of the schools in Douglas County, with the exception of some. But one of the things that surprised me was the quality of water in a lot of the drinking fountains at schools. And I actually brought a little pH tester and tested some of the water that was in some of the drinking fountains. And what I found was that the pH scale was a, quite a few bit of points off from where you'd expect a clean drinking water to be. So that's just something that I, I wanted to note, and especially now that I have the platform to mention it. It's something that you should be concerned about as well.
Okay, Alice, excuse me. I just upped the, the minutes to two per... I'm sorry. I should have made that more clear with you before I made that decision. So Blake, would you like to say some more about that?
This says 30.
Right. It would be 60. All right. Just flash 30 twice. I'm kidding.
Well, yeah. Yeah, there could be more, but really just, I mean, clean drinking water for kids, this is something that I think the city could address, and has the resources to make that possible.
Cool.
So that's it.
Okay. We'll go then to Zach Weiss.
Could you repeat it one more time?
Sure. What do you see as the city's major needs and goals?
The major needs, I honestly think revolve around the goals, to be honest. I don't personally know of, and I've talked to a few people, about like a big-picture vision of what Roseburg is supposed to be moving towards. I think one of the hardest things to accomplish is going somewhere if you don't know where you're headed. And I do think that that's one of the biggest things that we have going on with our city at the current moment. I think it would allow us to have a lot more conversation that's a little bit more direct and actually take us towards some goals, so settings for some sort of plan. Each ward needs to be doing that, but then the wards need to be doing that together as well for the big picture. And we are supposed to be advocates for our community. So we should be involved with the community that we have, that we're working with, to have their voice and push it out there to try and move everybody towards it. Unfortunately, you're not always going to make everybody happy, but if you can make the majority happy with that, that's what we're supposed to be here doing. And I really think the biggest issue we have is that we don't have a vision of where we're going.
Thank you. Okay, let's go to Ward Three, Tom Miklech, please. Major needs and goals for the city.
Okay. One of our goals is to alter our urban growth boundary, which we are approaching. And we've spent, I think, over eight years, and before that, another 15 years, trying to develop more property in Roseburg. And we found some, some flatter land to use and have exchanged that with some hilly ground in the northeast part of our city. In order to do that, the county had to agree to give up those lands and to accept the lands from the city. And it was kind of a landmark meeting where we all got together and came to an agreement about it. Now that proposal is at the state level, and we're waiting for it to be decided upon. And so that's, that's been one of our goals, and it seems like we're really close to accomplishing it, because we need... it because we need, we need more housing in Roseburg for our kids that are graduating from our high schools and allows them to stay around. And we need more medical people and they need housing. And we're doing the best we can with that. It seems like we're having some successes with that. And that's another matter I'd like to see, or some more festivals and fun things to do in Roseburg downtown. And we have several of those now, but I'm sure we can even do more than that. You know, I'd like to see that. And I'd also like to see us be a little better with our, our emergency preparedness. And we're making progress with that.
Very good. So let's go to Ward Two, Steve Hammerson, please.
And I think personally, selfishly, I would like my three sons to graduate from high school and say, why would I move anywhere else? You know, I, I want them to, I want us to build a city that is a model for the rest of Oregon to look up to. I want us to grow. I don't want us to grow the wrong way. I don't want us to turn to Portland. I don't want us to turn to Eugene. I'll be dead honest about that. But I want us to grow in a way that we have high-paying jobs. You know, we have safe, friendly spaces, parks for, for enjoying. There's, there's a lot of cool stuff going on in Roseburg. I just went to that lazy river that they did out, out near Melrose area. And I was just, I was like thinking to myself, I'm like, why, why is the biggest lazy river in Oregon in Roseburg? Because Roseburg's amazing. I mean, the wine country, the tourist attractions, really, there's, there's a lot of incredible stuff already going on. But the problem is the high-paying job market, just, it doesn't seem like it's really there. And I feel like we have, like I said before, skilled kids, kids that can get certifications early in their, in their career. You know, they can come out of Roseburg High School, have two credits to go to get a certification for a manufacturing job or, you know, some other kind of higher-paying job. So, you know, selfishly, I want the kids of Roseburg to graduate from high school and just go, why would I leave?
I think Roseburg's needs and goals, very similar to other people speaking tonight, housing inventory. We really need all levels of housing, not only low income but middle and high income so that there's a robust options for people in our community. Also, workforce is really important. Development of workforce, I agree with Steve, you know, like the partnership we have right now with UCC and the high schools, also the Med Ed College coming in, all those things are really helping make sure that we have people in our community that will stay in our community. They're, they're getting training and, but the, the biggest problem we have is that there's no place for people to live. And so that is the one thing that we really need to focus on is our housing inventory, making sure that young people can afford to live in our community, that they can get that starter home, they have a good paying job, they can go to UCC. I very much agree, you know, the trades are really important. It's wonderful if kids go off to college, but it's, it's wonderful if kids stay in our area and grow here and raise their families. That's really what we need, that's what we need as a city, right? We, we have to have those young people coming up and serving in positions like this someday, right? And so we really do need to help support them in that.
Thank you. Let's go to Ward One, how about David Moore, please?
Well, that's kind of a loaded question here. And we don't have, Alice won't let me talk long enough to actually mention everything. So I will summarize by saying what Zach called out is 100, if not 1,000%, if that was possible accurate, is we need a real vision and we need some goals that are measurable. And we started to try to develop that and we hit some roadblocks this year, but we need that. I think that another concept that a lot of times gets lost in conversations is what is Roseburg? Roseburg is not Melrose. Roseburg is not Green. Roseburg's not Sutherland. It's not even Winchester to some degree. Roseburg is a much smaller area. So when we talk, talk about the urban growth boundary, we're talking about extending it out and providing those services. But, and we're talking about housing, but we're talking about housing and what the council manages is within the Roseburg limits. City Council and this stuff doesn't work out in Melrose. Even though despite a vast majority of the folks that are very, play a lot of roles in what we do, live out in those areas, that's not where Roseburg is at. So if we want to focus and we want to, to address this, we really have to be focused on the boundaries of what's Roseburg. But absolutely, I think housing is important. I think that one of the challenges that we, we miss is people have to want to stay here, not just have the houses here, not just have the education, but people want to stay here. And so what is that community? What is that culture? What is that that makes Roseburg special that we want to get there? I'll also mention wine country and Crater Lake aren't part of Roseburg. It's where people come to stay when they're going there, hopefully, but it's not part of that. And so I think sometimes our focus gets distracted from trying to make our community better and Roseburg specifically, so.
Good. And Katie Williams, please.
Well, I think one of our needs is that we need to change people's perception of Roseburg. It is a great place and people that are visiting here don't see that. And they don't want to stay here and they don't want to spend their money here. And our need for economic growth is, is definitely there, but housing, absolutely housing, we need the housing. We're not going to be able to keep people here. We're not going to have young families stay here without housing. I'm really excited about the Charter Oaks thing. I think it's really cool and it will help us. I will expand on that too. Like, we are lacking in medical professionals. Why would they live here? There's nowhere for them to buy a house. There's just nowhere for them to live. And our community is suffering because we don't have enough medical professionals. So, yeah, I think the goals should absolutely be housing to promote the economic growth.
All right. Well, thank you. So now we're going to move on to question number five. And now, remember you have two minutes per question, okay, Alice? We're giving two, two minutes to, per person to answer. Sorry to spring.
It's yellow, it's sixty seconds.
That's great. But it says thirty. So you're putting that up when there's only thirty seconds left, right? You're putting that up when there's only thirty seconds left?
No, it's when there are sixty seconds.
Okay, so the thirty is sixty. The new sixty. Yeah. Okay, when she puts up the yellow sign, you have sixty seconds left. Okay, we're just, we're changing. We're being fluid here. Okay, great. Question number five. We'll begin with Ward One. David Moore. How would you strengthen the city's working relationships with surrounding jurisdictions on issues like transportation, policing, social services, and the economy? Two minutes.
Well, that's an interesting question. Well, how I've strengthened some of the relationships that I've had, and I've had the opportunity with some of, I assume local jurisdictions means like the county.
The county.
Things like that. It's just by having an open door, reaching out and talking to them and having kind of an open door. And when there's something that feels like it crosses, just reaching out and having those county commissioners and kind of on speed dial, if you will, and just reaching out and just having very open and honest questions about what's working well, what's not, and how can I help or, hey, what do you look at for this? I think it's just having that open lines of communication. I think, though, that today, the council doesn't play that big of a role in it. It's primarily the city staff that does a lot of that jurisdiction and takes ownership over those relationships. I think as Tom had brought up a little bit earlier, one of the things that we've seen a move towards is some of the council actually working a little bit more to develop those kind of roles. Now, I'm confused, was that thirty seconds or a minute?
Thirty means sixty.
Okay. She took off the numbers.
Okay, well, that's probably appropriate.
But I think that, you know, I think there's a lot of opportunities and I think that there's a lot of missteps that happen as we go through and learn. This has only been my second year kind of going through that and I know I've made quite a few missteps in different areas and I think there were opportunities that I could have exploited a little bit more to learn and to build those relationships. But I think that's part of this process is learning and trying to kind of figure out what works and where we can participate a little bit more.
Excellent. Katie Williams, please.
So I don't exactly know, but I do agree with David in that having an open door and creating the relationships with those areas, with the county, with the towns right near us is, is part of it. Being able to listen to what they need and creating those relationships with them. I guess that's really everything that David just said too. Like, we, we, being able to work together, being able to work together on, on bigger issues. And I hope to learn more about this, but not being on city council yet, I don't know all the ins and outs of everything. But I am really eager to learn.
All right. Thank you, Katie. Ward Two, Andrea Zalinski, please.
This is the wonderful thing about the county that we live in. We, our municipal and county work together on a lot of different things. And yes, we can always strengthen that. But that's the, because we live in this community, we are neighbors, we know each other. I serve on a lot of nonprofit boards, also on commissions, coalitions, you know, getting to know the issues and working with commissioners, our state reps, our state senator, like, talking about issues that are really important to our community and hoping that they will advocate for us at the state level. And it's working together all the time. When I worked in the sheriff's office, we had great relationships with all the law enforcement agencies with that, within Douglas County. And they meet regularly, they talk about issues, they work together really well. And a lot of different areas do that. David is very correct in stating that the way that the city is run is different than the county. So for a city, we are oversee things, but we are not the, the people that, because we have to decide as a, as a body. So not just one person can say, this is what you should do. You actually have to like work together as a body on that. So staff is really, that's their role, is that they work under our direction. So we can say, these are the things that are really important to us and can you work on this with the county or with the city of Sutherland or whatever it is that we need to work with? So it's knowing what role we play on city council and the importance of knowing that staff is doing the work day to day that is really important to get the job done.
Thank you. Yes, Steve Hammerson, please.
You mind repeating the question?
Not at all. How would you strengthen the city's working relationships with surrounding jurisdictions on issues like transportation, policing, social services, and the economy?
Well, I'll touch on the economy. I, I, I think we, as city council members, should reach out to robotics companies in particular. The talent coming out of Roseburg High School in robotics is like, they're nationally ranked. So I think we should reach out to robotics companies and just say, hey, you know, we, we're, we're going to have a workforce. This is a good place to come. What's the feasibility of you coming here? And then the other part of that is reaching out to other communities, like I hear in Green, they have, you know, industrial areas where they could set up shops. So then it's reaching out to admin and city admin in Green and, you know, it's in the purpose of growing. Like, I want to, I want to see us grow, see us get, you know, high-paying jobs here. And so in terms of transportation and policing, yeah, I mean, I, I think a partnership with city admin outside our district on what they're doing that works, what they're doing that doesn't work, what problems they're seeing that we aren't and vice versa. And just having that open line of communication to, to talk to them so that, you know, may, maybe there's a blind spot that one area doesn't see and the area does see and is actually addressing it. But I think it, it's mainly just communication, being open and making that phone call, being, being open to understanding the area and addressing the pain points.
Thank you. Tom Mikulak, Ward Three, please.
Well, of course, the city and the county and the states should all work together with policing and transportation. And I think that the police work pretty well together with our drug interdiction problems. We work together with our social services. I think we get together on our bus stops and we should be able to collaborate with them on all kinds of things. And of course, the dent people, I think, are county, but the city police sure don't hesitate to tell the dent people where a problem might be. I think they communicate pretty well. There may be some strained relationships between the county government and the city government, but it's mostly just misunderstanding. I think if we, people that work for the city would spend a little effort and go talk to the county people, we could all get along a little better in that manner. And also, the jail is a county facility, so the city sends miscreants over to the county jail and I think we pay a hundred and twenty dollars a night for a jail person to be in jail. And otherwise, the county police is, is a real good facility and so are the Roseburg city policemen. And I think most of them are real honorable people. And I think we're all getting along pretty good, actually.
Excellent. Okay, Ward Four, how about Zach Weiss, please?
As far as bringing our, you said strengthening the relationships. As far as strengthening the relationships with the surrounding jurisdictions, when it comes to transportation and policing, things like that, I will say I'm not as educated in it as I would like to be. I will say that we do work with them on a lot of stuff as it is, like you were talking about the dent team, things like that. I think we have a lot of stuff going that way and I would like to get more educated in that world. I do think as far as the economy goes, I think a lot of that comes down to the vision and the plan portion of Roseburg, like I had talked about previously. I think Roseburg is a necessity for a lot of our jurisdictions surrounding us because of where we're at and because of how centralized we are in it and what we currently have to allocate as resources. You know, we have the airport here, we have the I-5 corridor, we have all of those things as Roseburg, but I think a lot of the jurisdictions surrounding us use us out of necessity instead of out of value. And I think that if we started bringing more to the economy as a whole that brought in more people to the area, we would get that in return from these other communities. People like, cities like Sutherland, Winston, all of those, if they started working with us, they would want to start working with us because of the value that we could bring. Like, you had mentioned the lazy river in Melrose. Why is that in Melrose? Why is that not in Roseburg? Things like that, the things that we can bolster our economy here will bring value to the surrounding areas. And I think that's where we really need to put our focus.
All right. Thank you. And Blake Meacham, please.
As far as what I, I can do or what I, what I plan on doing to strengthen the relationships in Roseburg with the public is modeling a positive attitude. I think that one of the biggest issues in recent years is that the general opinion about a lot of public issues has grown increasingly negative. And I think by modeling a positive attitude, I think we can work from the ground up and improve people's opinions about a lot of these issues we've been talking about tonight. So as long as we continue to improve infrastructure and make Roseburg a, a better and safer place to be, then I think things will naturally improve, people will be happier and things will get better. Thank you.
All right. Great. So we're going to begin with questions from the audience. Have you filled out your cards and passed them forward? you filled out your cards and passed them forward? We do have some to start with, but we'd appreciate you writing down your questions and raising your hands so that someone can come pick them up. Yes? Yes, um. Okay, so we're going for one minute each. Okay, okay. Okay, great. Got it. Two minutes. We'll figure this out, yeah. Too mathematical. Okay, great. So I have a question here for Blake Meacham and Zach Weiss. Oh, okay. Yes. Okay, great. Well, we'll start with Blake and Zach. Um, what, about downtown, what is your vision for downtown? Since we all use downtown, do we, others want to respond to? So we'll start with you, Blake and Zach. What is your vision for downtown Roseburg? Yes, please.
Uh, downtown Roseburg is, is again, just to have a, a, a nice and, uh, safe place to be and to, uh, recreate. Um, as Roseburg's grown and as businesses have flourished, there's more things to do in downtown than ever. And so maintaining the safety and, um, and cleanliness of downtown has never been more important. So the, my vision for Roseburg, uh, downtown Roseburg is just to continue making it a better place to be.
Cool. Zach, you want to respond to that?
I have a lot of opinions about downtown. Anybody that knows me knows this. Um, I actually think in the digital world we live in right now, it is more important than ever that we have a community center. And I don't think there's many places that we can make a community center like we can our downtown. Um, I've lived all over the state, and I've actually lived on, up the other side of the country. I've lived a lot of different places. And Roseburg has something really special when it comes to our downtown walkable area. And I think it's a very underli, underutilized area. Um, I hear a lot of people talk about the history of what downtown used to be, and I truly think in a world right now with so many people used to the digital world, I think we're actually having to detach from that where people want that personal connection, that human interaction, where people want to go walk around on the street. And I think clean, safe, welcoming, the things that encourage people and communities to bring their family down so that kids can grow up down there, I think is really, really important for downtown. Um, I think it needs to be a pedestrian-friendly zone. I think we need to have more, um, stores in front and services that offer some sort of unique interaction, not just offices. Um, there's a ton of different things that I think downtown needs to be, and right now I don't know if we have that direction. And that's, again, part of the vision and part of the plan stuff.
Excellent. Thank you. Does anyone else want to respond to that? You'd have two minutes to talk about your vision for downtown. Katie?
Business owner downtown. I can see the potential that we have down there. Um, and it has been growing, and businesses are coming in, and we need to make sure that our downtown is inviting and safe. Um, people are scared to come downtown, but I'm really hoping the farmer's market moving down there, um, will bring more people in to see what we do have to offer down there. I don't need two minutes to say that because I agree with everything Zach said. I just wanted to add to that.
Great. Awesome. Anyone else care to respond to that? Yes, Andrea?
I just wanted to kind of add, there's some exciting things happening in our downtown. So because of you, the partnership with UCC, a lot of students are going to be coming downtown, which I really think is going to help revitalize our downtown area. When you have more people down there, there's going to be more shops available, there's just going to be more activity happening. So it's really exciting, the things that are coming, um, very, very soon. And the partnerships we have built with UCC and, um, are also Cow Creek Tribe, they're planning on developing some areas downtown that should be really help revitalize our downtown again. So a lot of really exciting things, I think, are coming.
All right. Would you like to respond, Steve?
Yeah, I mean, I'm big on deferring to the people that are immersed and knowledgeable in whatever area. So Katie is a, a business owner down there, or Blake, or Zach, I would defer to them, um, with the strong recommendation that somehow we figure out to get, some way to get away from that shark that chases us all around called the Prius. Because I, I think it's very unwelcoming to be running away from the, the Prius car when you go downtown. It's like jumbling where your parking spot is, playing, you know, this game of like, oh, I got to two hours. When you, when you have time constraints that you're worried about, you just, I've talked to so many people that they're just like, I don't even want to go downtown because this is my second ticket, and I know how much my third ticket's going to be. It's like this escalating scale, the more tickets you get, the more, and it's like, too stressful, I don't even want to deal with it. Um, unless they're, they're going to, you know, Alexander's or something to grab some food. So, yeah, I, I'm not a big fan of the way that we're doing that, uh, you know, punish the citizens of the city, um, for participating in the tourism of downtown with the Prius. So I would probably get working on trying to make that not a problem.
All right. So Tom, would you like to respond to that?
Yeah, I'd like to see a real vibrant downtown, and I think all of us would. Um, my vision for downtown is, uh, first of all, do not see people sleeping on our streets. And I oftentimes stop and ask those people to go get some help or stand up and walk around. Sometimes I get a good response, and sometimes I get a bad response. Um, we need to get the parking figured out, one way or another. Uh, I'd hope that, uh, we could have, uh, copied some examples from some other cities, uh, to help rectify that situation. Right now, we're with Ace Parking, and, uh, we're trying to, uh, come to a way that we can pay Ace Parking to patrol the area. Um, I'd like it to be safe. Uh, eventually, I would like to see some bathrooms downtown. Right now, uh, it's been proposed before, a long time ago, but bathrooms get destroyed by, uh, miscreants. So I don't know how we'll figure that one out. Uh, the, uh, Umquah tribe Indians bought the old Safeway building. They hope to, uh, develop it in some way or another. They don't know exactly what they're going to do, but we hope to see something new developed down there. And, uh, anyway, we want our businesses to be vibrant, but, uh, uh, we also want people to enjoy the experience of being downtown, and it's got plenty of potential. I hope it, uh, comes about.
All right. So David, did you want to respond to this? Okay, because I've got a, a good one for you all now. This is, uh, you've mentioned it somewhat. It's, um, a two-part question. Um, I'll read them both, and then you can respond as you wish. Have you had a parking citation since Ace Parking was put in charge? And number two, do you hear complaints from people in your district about the parking downtown? Who would like to start? Okay, Katie?
No and yes.
So no to, you haven't had a citation, and yes, you've heard complaints. Okay.
No, I haven't had a citation, but I typically walk downtown. Um, and yes, yes, yes.
You hear about complaints?
Yes, yes. From every business owner that I know down there, from every shopper, from every customer that I have. Yes.
Thank you. Andrea?
Um, yes, I have received a ticket. And yes, I've heard a lot of complaints. That is something that, um, you know, a lot of times on council, we're trying to solve a problem. And we did listen to the business owners. A lot of the problem was that we didn't have enough, um, available parking for people who were coming to visit downtown. So some sort of enforcement needs to be implemented. Now, I agree that I feel that they're a little too aggressive with the parking tickets. I feel like that sometimes, um, we could do a better job with customer service side. What I hope is that we can make things better with this, this new idea that we're having where people will be paying for parking downtown. Again, we, we do want people to come downtown to visit. We don't want them to feel punished to come downtown. We want it to be equitable, um, for everyone. So, so everybody will be paying for parking. We have not decided how that will look. So there's, there's a lot to be, that's going to happen over the next few meetings that we have. So it'll, it will be, patrons will pay part of it, and then also business will pay part of it in order to pay for the parking enforcement as a whole. Historically, downtown had a taxing district that was taxed. That's what built our parking garage. Um, the voters decided they did not want to continue that taxing district. And after that, we've struggled to figure out how we are paying for parking downtown, parking enforcement downtown. So with the influx of students that are coming downtown, with more businesses coming downtown, you do need to have more parking, right? And, and you also have to have people, but it, it has to make sense, too. Like, like Katie has a grooming, um, business, and her patrons are coming in, dropping off their dog. So they're not staying very long. They're just dropping off the dog, picking up their dog. Then there's other businesses that are, you know, restaurants and, and bars that people are staying a long time, you know? So their cars aren't moving. You have people who are shopping. So there's a whole different, um, plethora of different reasons why people come downtown. Some people live downtown. Some people are, have business meetings downtown. So there's, we have to have parking enforcement of some sort. Nothing is free. You know, if you want enforcement, you have to pay for it in some way. So what we're trying to find is an equitable solution to be able to enforce parking, but not, not make anybody take the whole burden, but make it equitable.
Would you fill out, excuse me, would you fill out a little question, questionnaire, please, um, that someone could, uh, bring to the table here? Yeah, Nancy, are you gonna give a form? Okay. Thank you. Okay, does anyone else want to address this question about Ace Parking and hearing complaints? Yes, Steve? Uh, is the mic on over here? Can, um?
I, I, oh, check it? Okay, cool. Sweet. All right. So, um, no, I haven't personally gotten a ticket. My wife has. Um, I, I feel stoked because I'm like, I feel like I missed Cleo. I answered the question before it came up. Um, but I, I, I would be, um, I would have a different perspective than Andrea on this one. I, I say, why are we paying for parking enforcement? Blow it up. Let's not do parking enforcement anymore. Let's, let's make downtown Roseburg as attractive to go to as possible. And to me, that's a speed bump. It's a, it's, it's enough of an issue from enough people that I've talked to that they're not going downtown because of parking enforcement. So it's like, it's not just, you know, people not having a good time downtown, spending time down there. The other problem is small businesses are losing money. So, I don't know. I think we should, we should do the small businesses in downtown Roseburg a solid and just say, let's see how not doing parking enforcement works for a year or two.
Anyone else care to respond? Tom Mikulak, next.
The city has spent, uh, a lot of time on parking. It's, again, really trying hard. Uh, last, uh, week, we had a regional director of Ace Parking come to our council meeting and, and speak to us about our parking situation. And, uh, together, we came up with a formula that metered parking or paid parking would cover seventy-five percent of the cost of enforcement of the parking, and the businesses would put in twenty-five percent. And, uh, we asked them to come back with some numbers about that. It was really good to see some people from Ace down there talking to us about it. And, uh, of course, we, we have the, uh, parking structure. It needs some refurbishments, but, and then we've got some paid lots downtown that, uh, people are utilizing. And, um, anyway, we hope that a solution is in the near future. Myself, I think that, uh, uh, in the past, we tried free parking. Uh, the business owners were asked to not park in front of their businesses and, uh, also their employees, but that did not work out. Uh, we, we had our police, uh, patrolling and with license plates, numbers that the owners of the businesses are supposed to supply. They quit supplying them, and it just didn't work. So we put in a bunch of meters. Now they're too old. Anyway, so it looks like, uh, we're gonna listen to Ace Parking's proposal, about seventy-five percent, uh, twenty-five percent split between, uh, parking meters and business input.
Thank you. Zach, you want to address this?
This is another one that I have lots of opinions about. Um, I'm actually sometimes not on the side of so many people when it comes to this one. Um, yes, I've gotten a ticket. Yes, I hear people talk about it all the time. Um, I do actually believe that we do need some version of parking enforcement. The idea of just throwing it to the wind has been done. It's already been tried. Um, unfortunately, everybody abuses the system. We have derelict vehicles that end up existing down there. We have problems with business owners and citizens, and everybody that exists down there taking advantage of the convenient parking spaces. And I think Roseburg is in a place where it's going to grow continuously. So we do need to work towards a future where this is something that's not going to be a problem for us. It's something that we can start moving forward with in a way that works. I honestly think Ace isn't actually the villain. I'm really tired of hearing people say that. I actually think that the application of the system was the problem. I think that was the number one issue that we had. Um, it's been an ongoing issue at a deficit for a long time, and it hasn't moved forward in a way that allowed them to start making the money that they needed to be to fill in that deficit. I don't necessarily know if Ace is the correct answer to the problem, but we do need some version of parking enforcement to encourage that downtown area to be for patrons and really for patrons alone. That is what the downtown main drags need to be. They have a bunch of new things that they're already working on that in the last city council meeting, I heard them talking about moving forward, and I think they're fantastic starts. This is the beginning. It's going to start moving us towards that stuff. Downtown needs that enforcement for a lot of different reasons, not just the businesses to exist, but we also need that revenue to encourage maintenance. We need it to help pay for the streets, to pay for the trimming of the trees, to pay for the parking garage. If we want the parking garage to be a clean, safe space, we all have to pay a little portion for it. I don't necessarily know if, we don't have answers, from my understanding, as to what the actual fees will be, but there is going to be an accessible version, from my understanding, of some version of pay-to-park down there. And I think that's important.
Thank you. Anyone else care to address that question about parking? We can change the subject. Yeah, we are running. Uh, we're going on, but...
There's two things really going on, and, and no, I haven't received a ticket from here, and yes, I've had people, uh, talk, talk about those things. Um, uh, I think the two things that really I keep in mind when, um, this problem, at least in my opinion, is when, uh, resources are scarce, people are willing to take, uh, more risk to pay those resources. And so I, I think one issue that people are having is that because they understand that parking spaces have become scarce, they're willing to run the risk of receiving a ticket, um, and running the risk of going over the time allotted for that spot. I also think that, um, in some cases, um, the best fruit is at the top of the tree. And so unfortunately, some of the parking spots that are available are a bit far away than some people are willing to, uh, park to get to where they want to be at downtown Roseburg. So, um, those are the things I keep in mind, um, by trying to avoid, uh, tickets, uh, parking tickets. But I understand that those things can't be applicable to everybody. Uh, but that's my opinion on it.
All right. Anyone else care to address the parking issue? All right. Next question, please. Oh, it says, this is a question. Why are you considered... Oh, it says, this is a question. Why are you considering continuing with Ace Parking when it is not working out financially? $300,000 deficit to Andrea.
I know, it doesn't make sense, does it? So I, council takes accountability that we move forward with using Ace. Is it going to be the best solution? I don't know. Sometimes you have to figure out how it's going to kind of unfold. The nice thing about, one of the nice things about serving on council, and we make decisions, nothing is in stone. So if this contract doesn't work out, if we still continue to have problems with customer service, if people do feel like they're not finding parking spaces, that Ace is hard to work with, if city staff feels like Ace is hard to work with, we can end that contract at any time. And so, yeah, it didn't work out. So far, they have not been making money. And then we are in a deficit, and we've actually had to use money that we could have been spending for much better things than parking. And I 100% agree with that. But we also have to, like Zach said, we have to move forward and get something done. And let's see if it works. If it doesn't, we can, we can say, this is not working out, and we can change our mind on that. So.
Thank you. Wait just a moment. Sure, Steve, go ahead.
Do these mics turn off and on? That's crazy. Okay.
We've got a controller back here.
I mean, I would, after, after hearing that we've tried blowing it up, and it didn't work, I think we should go downtown and talk to all the small business owners, one by one, and say, what can we do to make parking, parking fees and parking enforcement non-existent so you can make more money as a small business downtown? And then hopefully, we could find somebody that has a creative solution for it. I think, I think a lot of being in an elected official position is getting ideas from the ground floor. You know, we shouldn't be the masters and commanders of the way that you guys live. You know, we should be, we should recognize there's an issue, recognize a problem, get as much input as we can by the first, by Katie, by people that are downtown, that might have ideas, and field them, net them, and try to move forward with possibly, you know, and then whoever, whoever had the winning idea, I would say, like, give them a free parking pass downtown or something. I don't know. That's it.
Thanks. Okay, so we have a new question. What role can the city play in having more mental health care available? Any takers? David Moore?
You got me? All right. Thank you. I don't know. That's a great question. It, and, you know, Andrea might have a little bit more exposure to this because she's been on the council a little bit longer. But in the two years that I've been on, the things that I've seen have just really been some of the city staff working for not for, with not-for-profits around different things. But I haven't really heard that I'm aware of any conversations around mental health. We've talked, we've had Adapt and others come in, but I don't remember, I don't know. I'm going to pass my time to Andrea.
Okay, great.
Yeah, there's, reaching out to our nonprofits, the people that are working with, with our mental health, the people who are suffering from mental health. So Adapt is, does a lot of that, Aviva, Family Development Center. There's a lot of nonprofits in our community that are helping to address mental health issues from young children all the way to adults. What can we do to encourage more? We need more resources, right? But I really feel like a lot of people aren't getting access to the resources they need. And also sometimes, it's, it's hard to navigate when you are suffering from mental health and you're trying just to survive every day, having, even though there's resources available to you, a lot of times they have, they really do struggle accessing those mental health resources. So how maybe can we, as city council, learn more about it, learn, help people navigate how we can connect people to the resources we need? Also, talk to our state legislature, like, what can we bring to our community that can be more robust, that can address the mental health issues in our community?
Well, one person suggests here in the question, that Mercy is a monopoly, and has not helped enough with mental health issues. And can we someday have a, another smaller hospital or clinic in Roseburg to address these problems? I wonder if that's something that...
Well, and again, our partnership with UCC, so the medical program that they're implementing in UCC right now, there, there's a track to, for that mental health education track. Again, hopefully, that we'll have more people in our community that are educated in that, can start clinics, can, so, yes, that would be great. Let's, let's do it. Let's get something going.
Thank you. So we have another question, and then we'll probably wind it up here. For Blake and Zach, but I think anyone can participate in this. Regarding police services, will you introduce or support a tax increase to fund more police officers for more hours in Roseburg? Shall we start with Blake? Would you like to answer that?
Sure.
Great.
So my knowledge about this topic is relatively limited, but I will say that, again, people's perspective and opinion about police officers can sometimes be somewhat negative. But I do support that. There are people out there that do serve and help protect us, and also work for the public. As far as if I believe that there should be a tax for them to serve longer hours, there may be an alternative to that solution that I'm unaware of as of now, but it is something that I am interested in knowing more about. Thank you.
All right. Zach, would you like to address that?
I couldn't speak to saying if I would be pro on a tax at this current moment with it. I think there's a lot of resources that aren't being used to their fullest at the current, at the current standard, as far as like, what our police officers are being held accountable to, or what they're being told about that they need to enforce in general. I know I spend a lot of time working together with a neighborhood watch that we're currently trying to establish with downtown businesses. And that is a huge resource for the police department. I think there needs to be a lot more resources that are helping them before we start taxing out just putting more hours on their payroll, or hiring on more staff. I think there needs to be a lot more things taken into account before that. A lot of this comes down to the issues that we have with, you know, we've talked about the broad term of homeless. There is a lot of things that they need to be helping, or that we need to be helping them with, in order to make sure those resources are being used properly, so that their resources can also be used properly.
Very good. Yes, David?
I feel compelled to respond to this. A couple of things I would, I would call out there is, right now, we're not having, that I'm aware of, we're not having a funding issue when it comes to our police force. We're having a quality candidate item. That's our challenge. I don't remember if the current number is eight or nine that we're currently short on, and six, I'm being told six. So we're currently six, and we spent a lot of this year being nine or more down. So we're having limited staff on here. And I have to say that I think Roseburg has probably the best, and I'm biased, but probably the best, or one of the best, police forces out of the state of Oregon. I'm sure there's a metric that the chief can pull up to show it. But the chief and Captain Sanders, they really focus on getting quality candidates. I know everybody's experience varies, but having been exposed to different areas and different police forces, I truly believe that Roseburg has a better quality than some of the other region's police force. And I think because of that level and that bar that the Roseburg Police set, it makes it really hard to find candidates. And I don't remember the exact numbers, but there were some pretty big numbers that were thrown out that every time they run a run, they'll get 50 or so-and-so that'll apply. Out of that, only a certain number will actually make the cut. And out of that, there might be one or two candidates that might go on to the next one. So there's a very small population, we're very, or not me, but the chief and the police force are very specific about the quality and the types of candidates. And then it's the retention part. Because now, we still, we're so short that these, this police force has to do so much work that sometimes they're, they're exhausted, which is why we went through some of the directions we did.
Okay. Any, anyone else like to, tax increase for more police officers? Tom McLellan, please.
I'd like to echo what David said. The police force in Roseburg, as far as I know, are real professional, and they're really good, and they're considerate. And I think it's because of Gary Cloppensteins, our chief of police efforts, in making sure our policemen are well-trained, and know the laws, act correctly. The problem is recruitment. And who wants to be a police officer, I think, is what he's dealing with. So we're trying, and we do have a, a police education force out at Umquah Community College, and they're producing some people. And anyway, the chief really looks people over, and what time he told us, that a credit to that is that the city is not being sued, has not been sued for a while, because the police are conducting themselves in a real professional legal manner.
All right. Anyone else? Yes, Steve Emerson.
I was going to say, I don't, I don't think I've, I remember a story about like, a bad cop doing a bad thing, since we moved down here five years ago. So that makes sense. And it's awesome that we have, we have that. But I think the last question, this question, kind of go hand in hand a little bit. I think, you know, I actually got a buddy, Joel, he works at Adapt. I would go and talk to him about the, I would say, hey, in your company, what's the internal dialogue on how you could reach out to more mental health crisis situations in this area? I think that would lower the demand of needing the police officers, hopefully to a point where, you know, we have exactly as many as we need. But, yeah.
All right. Anyone else care to comment on that? Zach, you did once already. Sure.
I do think, you know, like you said, this relates to the other question. I think it also relates to some of the similar statements that have been made, as far as, you know, having a hard time staffing medical professionals, having people that want to come down here. I think the fact that the Roseburg, as a whole, the community we have, isn't a desirable community for the rest of the people in the state. Like, if you go and visit other parts of the state, people aren't jumping to come to Roseburg. They're not even coming to visit, to be honest, a lot of the times. And it's really unfortunate. I think if we bolster the community here and the economy here, where somebody that comes down that wants to be a police officer, but the rest of their family can also live here and thrive here, I think that would help with the staffing issues.
Anyone else? Katie, did you want to say anything?
He actually just said exactly.
All right. Unless there's no other comments, we're going to close the questions. And I want to thank you all for being here and for being interested in local government. Thank you, candidates. The recorded forum will be posted on our YouTube channel by tomorrow sometime. If you're signed up on our email list, you'll get a link, you'll receive a link to it, if you just can't get enough of this. And so, otherwise, you can visit our website, l w v u v dot org. And I wish you all a very good night, and don't forget to get your ballots in.
And thank you, Alice.
Yes, thank you, Alice.